Wednesday, August 16th, 2025. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a notice dated January 9th, 2025. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier-Post, posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, Bud Dugle Center, Edgewood Acres, Elentown, and the Winslow Township post offices. Mission statement. The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent, lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and confident members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community, and in a climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Redden?
Here.
Ms. Claude?
Present.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Mr. McManus?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Pitts?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Can we please stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we say the district goals, I just want to acknowledge Committee Men Darius Peoples. Committee Men, how are you?
Fine.
Ms. Claude, can you please go over our 2024, 2025 district goals?
Yes. Twenty-four, twenty-five district goals. Student achievement: Continue to implement best practices for delivering instructions to students. This shall include: Conduct weekly administrative walkthroughs to monitor teaching and learning. Consistently review student assessment data to guide and redirect teaching. To continue to provide supplemental activities, example tutoring, enrichment periods, to address student deficiencies. Benchmark assessment for ninth grade math and language arts. Number two: Create a safe and positive learning environment for students and staff. Strictly enforce the district's student code of conduct. Focus on upper elementary school students to modify student behavior in early grades, in the early grades. Reinforce positive behavior in a specific and genuine way. Approach discipline with care, respect, and the desire to see the good in all students. Number three: Increase parent, caregiver, and community engagement in education. Provide opportunities for two-way communication with district stakeholders. Continue with communication consortium. Focus on refining our communication methods and messages to better market our schools. Continue with our public relations with the community.
Thank you, Ms. Claude. I'm going to change the agenda. And I'm going to ask for a motion to go in executive session.
I frame that, Mr. President.
Yep.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, there are nine exceptions upon which we may enter into an executive session. We'll be doing so on August 13th, 2025, at approximately 7:05 PM. Of the nine items on which we're permitted to go into executive session, number eight matters involving employment, appointment, termination of employment, terms and conditions of employment, et cetera. In this particular instance, having to do with administrative personnel matters. And I understand and appreciate the public's appreciation for the fact that we have to go into executive session at the beginning of the meeting. We will try and make it as short as possible, but I would estimate that it would be between 20 and 30 minutes. You need a motion and a second and a roll call.
Motion?
I have a second.
Second.
Yeah.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Present.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can I have a motion to adjourn executive session?
Motion to adjourn executive session.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
President.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Moving on to awards and presentations. Do we have any correspondence?
None at this time.
Moving on to minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes? Open and closed session from our regular meeting July ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Opening close session.
Motion to approve the following many, many, many meeting minutes for the Department of Education, regular meeting, open and closed session on July ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Second, Mr. Clark. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Abstain.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Abstain.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Moving on to board committee reports. Mr. Thomas, another committee?
Yes, I do have a few things I'd like to talk about. Uh, we know that we had a little recess, uh, for the last couple of months, but just starting up again, uh, our first game for our varsity girls volleyball will be September the fifth. And also our varsity girls soccer have a game that's starting up this season, September the thirtieth. And our boys soccer is starting up their team as well. And also I wanted to just give a reminder that our, uh, Mr. Kenny Parker, who had an allocation of, uh, donation has come in for the Booster Club of five hundred dollars that was made two weeks ago. So that, that, that has suffice, but one of the biggest things or the biggest questions or the statement I have for not just the board, but people at hand, are you ready for some football? Uh, Winslow Eagles on August the twenty-eighth will be playing IMG Academy, Ocean City at seven P M. The second game, we're going to see Highland to pay some respects to some of our old staff members over there. The third game will be Friday night here, sold out Burton Catholic. And just when you think it's got easy, no, Millville, where we come into town to play us on a Saturday at one o'clock. And then when we go into the great city of Camden the next week to pay them a visit. We went to high, so we're going to get the high. And on the way back, we're going to stop at East Side, used to be Woodrow Wilson, and give them a little taste of the high. And then we got something to do with mainland. We gonna go east and take care of mainland and then come back and take care of Cherokee. So if you're not ready for some football, I am.
Are you on the drama club committees?
I'm on the marketing committee.
There you go. Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. Ms. Martin, is there anything from the citizens advisory committee?
If you do that, Ms. Martin, I'm leaving.
Um, citizens advisory meeting is scheduled for tomorrow evening at six thirty in the administration building. And, uh, no minutes for the education meeting at this, as education committee at this time.
Thank you very much. Mr. McManus, the marketing committee?
Sir, um, uh, no meeting was held since our last board meeting. However, uh, the board was out at, uh, Winslow Township's most recent national night out, which was held August fifth, twenty twenty-five, over at the Township Municipal Center. I felt rather safe over there. I wanted to interject in your notes. But this event was rather well attended by the community. Uh, most board members were in attendance, uh, for part or all of the evening. And I would like to personally thank, uh, operations for Winslow, um, the school district for the timely delivery of the board tent, padded chairs, tables, tablecloths, banners at Alia, uh, previously, and that were previously donated by, uh, board members. And I'd also like to thank in particular Ms. Dredin, Pitts, and Ms. Peterson to my right here, as they were present the whole time, and saw to the provision of snacks, water, as well as various giveaway items with B O E information on them. As a reminder, the board will be in attendance at the upcoming event, which is Family Day, August twenty-third, from two to seven P M. In New Brooklyn Park, wristbands that, we had talked about this in our prior meeting, uh, wristbands that will be free to the public or in the final stages of development, production will be forthcoming. Uh, there is an inspirational theme, we're going to put a Q R code on there, uh, be do have, um, as a, as a theme that we've talked about, uh, to inspire the kids to, to really think big. I think that's the thing that we're really hoping to do because, um, they can do it, there's no doubt about it. Uh, it's purpose itself to be an encouragement that each student in this life. Our next meeting is scheduled for twenty-third of October, twenty twenty-five, over at McManus House. Goodies will be in the tent. Dan Lamont.
Thank you, Mr. McManus. Um, Ms. Dredin, um, operations committee?
Yes, there is Ms. Dredin's operation committee. Ms. Chico will read those, uh, Mr. President.
Uh, the operations committee met on Tuesday, August twelfth, twenty twenty-five, at four P M via Webex. In attendance were Ms. Dredin, committee chair, Mr. Shaw, Mr. Shaw, board president, and Mr. McManus. Also in attendance were Ms. Boyle and Ms. Chico. The following items were discussed, though. Um, there is a, there are minutes in your folders to follow. Um, high school, number one, high school H V A C F three, land, our architects sent an email stating that the construction costs estimate has risen higher than previously discussed. This means that they may have to make some space for alternates in the bid specifications. Number two, twenty-four, twenty-five budgeted capital and other projects, E I associates. H V A C systems at schools five and six. Both projects were out, were put out to bid, but no responses were received in April of twenty twenty-five. As of the date, we still have not received D O E approval for school five. Our intent remains to rebid both of these projects early fall. Other projects, twenty-four, twenty-five. A roof replacement at the admin building. We received notification from the D O E on June third that the submission had deficiencies. We reported that E I would address them. To date, we still have not received D O E approval. A partial roof replacement at the high school J wing. We received this notification on June third that this mission had deficiencies and we, and that needed to be corrected. To date, we still haven't received D O E approval. The construction of the full bond for athletics at the high school. To date, we have not received the project approval from the D O E. The middle school H V A C project. The bid was awarded, the contractor is ahead of schedule, but has recently informed us there in the park for the inside piece of the condenser that they are trying to secure. However, they still are hopeful that the project will still be completed by September twentieth. Revised purchase award, Hundredan County Educational Services Commission. We are requesting to amend the approval from a one-sided marquee to a double-sided marquee for the high school, similar to the marquee purchased for the middle school. Charge off outstanding lunch balances. The food service fund has old outstanding residual balances in the amount of five hundred thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-one cents, which have accrued since twenty eighteen. The district is requesting to charge off those balances, starting every student off at the same point as of December. And number five, federal funding. We finally received formal notification of federal funding for allocations for twenty-five, twenty-six on Friday, August eighth, twenty twenty-five.
You've been waiting a long time for that.
Yeah. The approval to apply for these grants are on the August thirteenth at end of. The meeting adjourned at four fifty-seven P M. The next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. That concludes the minute.
Thank you, Ms. Chico.
Question, just three questions. Would you go ahead and spill, uh, number four, from the operations committee? Am I to understand that the outstanding balance for the food service fund is a little over half million dollars?
Yes.
But that's from two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's for seven years, I understand. Uh, and that we are going to charge off those balances?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pitts, policy committee?
Um, the policy committee did not meet in the month of July. We will be meeting, uh, this month in August. Um, we will meet, um, on August twenty-seventh at six P M prior to the August twenty-seventh board meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts. Mr. Thomas, anything from the township committees?
Uh, yeah, the economic development committee, uh, I met last week. I mean, it goes constant contacts with the big coordinator, Niki Shikrim, to try to discuss ways of allowing it to be more, uh, collaborative, as different events they have in like as Winslow Day and other things that they are having. Uh, housing development is still on the uptake and there's, there's, there's some things that we need to collaborate to them to make sure that we're keeping it aligned with the things they will need for that. They also continually do traffic studies with, uh, not only the township, but the county to see if they can provide better lane, a better traffic flow throughout the township. Uh, then they have another meeting, I think, in a couple of months that we will attend. And we'll make sure that we'll be in a great collaboration and working well with, with the township and the municipal, uh, administrators.
There's nothing new from the planning board at this time. Um, but I would like to, um, ask Mr. People's Voice in our audience, if, I'm putting him on the spot. Well, if he could bring back to the township committee, um, with the craziness of our roads, if we could actually have, uh, the township look into, um, with the start of school coming upon us very quickly, um, doing something about our wonderful citizens blowing past school buses. Um, because that, you know, with some of the accidents that we've been seeing around Sicklerville, um, that can, that, I don't want to see something happen with our students as they, uh, start, uh, getting ready for school. So, if you don't mind, that would be greatly appreciated. Um, moving on to our superintendent's report. Um, starting on the top of page three and going all the way to the bottom of page fourteen. Can I have a motion to approve our superintendent's report as is recommended for approval by our superintendent?
I move to approve the superintendent's report that begins on page three, letter A. To page fourteen, letter B at the bottom.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions? No questions? Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Before I move on to the business administrator's report. Board members, if you take note of all the great activities that our schools are going to have moving into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, remember which schools that you have, because there's lots of things for you to do.
And there's more to come.
Yeah. Oh, boy. Um, moving on to the business administrator, board secretary's report. Can I have a motion to, uh, it goes from bottom, uh, top of page fifteen to the bottom of page twenty-four? Can I have a motion to approve the business administrator, board secretary's report as is, uh, recommended for approval by the business administrator, board secretary?
I move to approve the business administrator, board secretary report that begins on page fifteen, and it goes through page twenty-four, and that's one through A and B, one through thirty-six.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions? Okay, I just have a couple of comments. Um, on our board meetings, I just want to remind everybody that the second meeting in November is, um, that you guys mark this on your calendar, that that's on a Tuesday before Thanksgiving, it's not on a Wednesday. Um, also, there's only one meeting in December. And for everybody to remind themselves that reorg is January seventh. Um. Um, and, oh, what, I think that's it. I didn't get to, I didn't get to yet. I, I'm just doing, yeah, I stuck, I did questions first.
Yeah.
I'm going to do the roll call next. Um, all right, I think I'm done now. Um, I don't have any more notes in there. So, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes, but I have to abstain from page fifteen, letter B, uh, number, number six B on the vendor list, um, number six J seven-two-seven for preferred home health care, and number six-three-eight-zero for Star Pediatric Home Care. All right, moving on to personnel. I'm going from top of page twenty-five to the bottom of page thirty-two. On the personnel report, can I have a motion for the personnel's report to be approved as the superintendent recommended for approval?
I move to approve the superintendent's, or the personnel report recommended by the superintendent, starting on page twenty-five, letter A, and ending on page thirty-two, that is one through seventeen, eighteen, sorry.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. President, one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Page twenty-six, letter D, approved to rescind the following new hires. Do we know why, is that, um?
Well, in general, um, other office decisions, and most of the time people are still looking, even though they initially accepted the position, they continue to look until they get the.
Thank you, Dr. Clark.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I couldn't hear you, Dr. Clark.
I said in general, people are still looking, even though they've accepted a position here, they are still continuing to look. And if they find something else that they're interested in, then they decline the offer.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Um, on page twenty-seven, item B A is no or others yes.
Did you say B A or three A? I'm sorry.
Page twenty-seven, three A.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Um, I'm going to stop for a second. Ms. Clemens, can you stand up for a second? I want to congratulate you on becoming the new assistant superintendent.
Thank you.
I believe that Ms. Clemens has finished with her.
Oh.
Is this my husband's jar?
Oh.
You always want to get a hug and some credit, now, you always, always.
The district for quite a few years, so I am confident, um, that, uh, she will be able to carry on. So thank you for accepting the responsibility.
Thank you for letting me. Thank you for letting me.
I also want to thank her husband because she's going to be working a lot of crazy hours, too. And I want to thank Dr. Clarkamow for helping get us through this hurdle and devoting a lot of time for everything she's done right now for us.
Thank you very much. I have been here for such a long time and I've seen such growth. And I want to still see growth happen for the district and I wish nothing but the best, so I gave Winslow my best and now I'm going to spend the time with my little shadow following me around. But thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you again, Dr. Clarkamow. Back to our agenda, moving on to our addendum. Everybody can take a couple of seconds to look at the addendum. All right. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report on our addendum as the superintendent recommends it for approval?
I move to approve the superintendent's report that begins on page one, letter A, one and two.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions? All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Moving on to the Board Secretary's report, can I have a motion to approve the Business Administrator Board Secretary's report as it's recommended for approval by the Business Administrator Board Secretary on the, on page two?
I move to accept the Board Secretary's report beginning at top of page two, letter A, one.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Mr. President, I would like to share, since we are looking at the addendum. Item number one under the Estegrant that Mr. Thomas is so excited about. Mr. Thomas, when I tell you this, I don't want you to step out of your seat. So in addition to get in the allocation, if we've waited so long, we got an additional one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. We all have lost, a reduction of a thousand dollars, a little over a thousand dollars under our Title Three, Title Two, which is professional development. So we're grateful for that increase.
Very good. Moving on to the Personnel Report. Can I have a motion to approve the Personnel Report as the superintendent recommends it for approval?
I move to approve this Personnel Report that begins on the bottom of page two, letter A, one, two, and three, on page three.
Second, Mr. Clark. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Moving on to the Open Public Records Act request.
Yes, Mr. President. Winslow Township Board of Education responded to the following open request between July second, twenty-twenty-five, and August seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Number one was Rebecca Nieves, Board Member Training Transcripts for All Board Members, Sperren or Otherwise, From the President in the Past Five Years. That was approved. Jennifer Lee, sorry, Jeffrey Lee, Smart Recure, wanted purchasing records from January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five to current. Request is limited to readily available records without physical copying, scanning, or printing paper documents. Any edible electronic documents are acceptable. Included purchase order number, purchase order numbers are not used. A comparable substitute as acceptable, invoice and conference check, number two, purchase date, line item details, and other information, and that was approved. C T Mills Public Info Access LLC wanted access to public records containing a complete directory of all employees within your school district specifically, requesting the most current records that include the following information for each employee, full name, job title, school department or office assignment, email address, or work email address, work phone number, work address, or location, and that was provided. And that concludes the Open Public Record.
Thank you, Ms. Chico. Dr. Clarkamow, informational items?
Just a couple. Earlier this year, we were approached by representative from Ruffus University that was on a rain guard at two of our schools. And that was school six and school three. School three was selected. And I'm happy to report that next week, that process will start. So hopefully, it will be completed before the children arrive. And they will have representatives that will come throughout the school year that will help with the planting and helping to make sure that the guard is working. We also have an issue at the high school, we were replacing the carpet and the high school library, so it is possible that that may not be in place by September, because we've encountered some minor issues that have to be resolved before flooring is completed. So it may not be functional come September, and it's not because we've done anything wrong. It is an issue that has to be resolved by the architect, to make sure that everything is fine with the flooring. On the board report, you saw a request to submit a three-year corrective action plan for the English Lane Construction Plan. We submitted that plan to the state park, I believe, on June twenty-sixth. There were some minor changes that were requested, and that is why we are submitting the corrective action plan. We are still looking and addressing the issue of the food pantry that was presented. And we have some concerns. We will be meeting on August nineteenth to discuss the concerns and to see how we move forward. The issue of Chromebooks, we are resolving that as well to make sure that we have everything in place before that's fully implemented. And so, students will not be receiving Chromebooks at the onset of school. There are a few things that need to be worked out, and we will, we will be resolving that. But Chromebooks are here, and until we resolve the minor issues that we have, they will not be distributed.
Moving on to old business?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Dr. Clarkamow, do you have a tentative date of when the Chromebooks will be issued out?
I don't, and we're going to be discussing that, Ms. Claude, as part of the, I believe, the Policy Committee. I've asked to meet with the Policy Committee. Because there are some guidelines and things that we have to put in place, and all of that's not ready. There are many portions and other things that will become an issue, that I foresee being an issue that has not been addressed. And I need to discuss those with the Policy Committee to see how we proceed. So what I can say is that the Chromebooks are here, all of the children will have access to Chromebooks during the school day. But as far as assigning them to students so that they have them twenty-four-seven, we're not ready for that until we resolve the concerns that we have. So I would say to you that probably not before December.
I have another question as well.
Yes.
In regards to the audit, the technology audit that was going on, that's supposed to be happening in our school right now, what is the update on that?
So we are still waiting from the vendor to assign a person here in the district, and so far, we have not heard anything from them yet.
Not even a preliminary report?
We don't have a preliminary report, other than what was already presented to the board. We've not received anything additional, other than they are waiting to identify a person to assign to Winslow.
And we won't have a date on that either?
We don't have a date yet.
Is anyone looking into that?
Well, of course we have. We followed up, and we still don't have anyone that's been assigned to Winslow.
Did they say what's taken so long?
If I had to, no. So I won't speculate, but no, I don't have anything for you.
Moving on to old business. Is there any old business? For old business, I will just remind everybody that Saturday is our board retreat.
This Saturday?
This Saturday. It is upon us.
Because there's no football.
Nine AM, nine AM here.
So, Mr. Shaw, may I ask, what is the essence of the board to conduct that retreat here in this, in this conference room?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
Let the board know that with the change of date, I will not be available.
Yes.
But you can reach me via internet if there's something that I need to go on to interfere my vacation and come on for that.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And then I just wanted to thank the staff, the summer staff and administration. I had the opportunity to go to school three. And the students' end of year, or end of summer project was influential individuals. And the way they presented their material was so interesting. I thought I was only going to be there from nine to twelve, but we went almost to twelve fifteen. And I just appreciated the time that I spent with them.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Do we have any new business?
Mr. President, I do.
Got it.
And I do, too, Mr. President.
Mr. President, to you, the board, the community, the staff, I'd like to make a public apology. Some time ago, you know, my overzealous to, about our football and our team, I did a show from the field with no permission. I violated policy. And I just want to apologize to everybody for doing that. I had a guest on the show, and he made a sort of like a political announcement, which shouldn't have been done. So I want to make a formal apology to you, Mr. President, to the board, to the staff, to the community, and I can assure you, that item won't happen again.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Oh, new business, Mr. President? Yeah, I just wanted to draw attention, board members, to our folder. You do have a copy of the flyer for Family Day. I think Mr. McManus mentioned it in his report with regards to our involvement and our participation. I've been in contact with the township, and they have a new way now of having folks participate, and I mean folks, I mean vendors and things, and so now we're considered a non-food vendor. And you have to go on the website and you have to create an account. And so that's what I'm in the process of doing. They did extend their cutoff date, so, and as was noted, there is a events, is a new person, relatively new, who is the events coordinator. And she is she is moving that particular process in a more technological direction, okay? And so, but with regards to the board, I would like to ask the board members and remind them that certainly we do participate, right? And usually, with regards to finding out exactly who's going to be there when, I'm asking board members just to let me know, because it is next Saturday, August twenty-third, just let me know the time that you'll be able to come and dedicate to, to our table. The event itself runs from two P M to seven P M. And basically, we begin to fold up our tent, so to speak, at about five-thirty, six, because at six o'clock, a concert starts. So what I'm saying to the board members, if you can let me know what kind of time that you could allocate to the Family Day with regards to our participation. And Dr. Clarkamow, I know usually, we do have giveaways, but mostly, we have informational kind of things on our table. Will we have any additional? I mean, we do give snacks, and we have some kind of informational games that will be obtained, and that there'd be offered a little prize for that, but is there any other things that we would be considering?
We're not able to do as we've done in the past. I can provide informational items.
Okay, thank that. I talked about what was very popular, and it really flew off our table. On National Night Out was the, those books, the green books with the pens?
Yes, Ms. Pitts.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Clarkamow.
Dr. Clarkamow, thank you for agreeing to put some informational items out. If all possible, can we put out the information like a little save-the-date card with the dates of the board education meetings and upcoming after-school nights for all of the schools?
That's part of the informational item that we
I just wanted to make sure those, those critical items are on the fly.
We always do that, Mr. Clark, but it will not be a card.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Ms. Pitts, I could tell you right now, I won't be at Family Day.
Yes, I understand. I do know that these two board members will not be present, but that still leaves seven of us.
One thing for new business that I have, September twenty-seventh, at the Bud Dugle Center, correct, Mr. Peoples', Winslow Township Career Job Fair?
Yeah, I think they got it too this year.
Yep. So I just want to make sure that the community is aware of it, and if any of our high school seniors want to start getting an opportunity to look in what their careers are going to look like after high school, that'd be a great opportunity for them to start looking at it, because you know, the township will be there, the police department, the fire department, the trades will be there. There'll be tons of different careers that'll be there, so it's a great start to get an idea of, you know, if you're not going to go to college and you have a non-college-bound student, or if you're just somebody looking for a career. It's a great opportunity to get, get yourself in to look at what's going on in Winslow and the careers in the area, so. September twenty-seventh, it's always well-attended, so I would recommend getting out to it.
Mr. President, if I could just add one more thing under new business, just informational. Camden County, Camden County puts out a newsletter periodically.
Yes.
And I thought that this particular information that was that was presented in the August seventh edition certainly applies to Winslow as a whole, but certainly will affect, I do believe, our buses.
Okay.
And it's, and this is what it is, it's a two-point-five-million-dollar intersection improvement project coming to Winslow. Later this month, Camden County will break ground on a major intersection improvement project in Winslow Township. The two-point-five-million-dollar project will include the installation of a roundabout at the intersection of Sicklerville and Eriel Roads, stormwater, and drainage infrastructure improvements, and the demolition of an abandoned building on Eriel Road. If we're familiar with that particular section, some of us refer to it as the point, and that what has, what is there has been an old wah-wah building. And so that's scheduled for demolition. The entire project is expected to take approximately one year to complete. There will be periodic closures along Eriel Road throughout the weeks of August eighteen and August twenty-fifth. And in reading that, Dr. Clarkamow, my mind immediately went to our buses, how that's going to impact on our buses, our bus.
I have to give you a copy.
You got a copy, you got an extra copy for me?
Yes, I do, sir. Is Dr. Carcomile? Can I stay down with Mr. Thomas?
One more thing. Thank you.
Yes, same.
And I just want to inform the board and the, the community that the VFW Post 303 on Sickler Avenue, we're coming together with the program with the Philadelphia 76ers and the veterans. And we're going to try to do like a read-a-thon thing for our children, where vets and pros actually invite children out to come to reading program, reading sessions with them. Soon as we get it more concrete and dates, I will make sure I bring it back to the board and I'll announce it out on social media and all the avenues so that we can invite our children of our community to come enjoy the veterans, which I am one. And I'm post, I'm one of the officers at the post there. I will make sure that we completely involve the community. And also, the VFW 303 is having a book, bookbag giveaway on Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00, and they have 200 Chick-fil-A sandwiches to give away as well. So if you know anyone in your community who needs bookbags, please go out to VFW on Sickler Avenue, Sickler, this Saturday from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and take your kids and our people in the community who may need help with getting bookbags for the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Claude. Anybody else for new business? Moving on to public comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making important decisions that affect the children of our community. We believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings, to ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings and offer comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district. We ask that speakers follow the guidelines for making public comment. The board secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comment, and we'd ask that you kindly respect the following procedures. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Two, please state your full name and town of residence. Three, please limit your comments to four minutes. Four, in event we're unable to answer your question, please supply your name, address, telephone number, or email address where you can be contacted, and your questions will be answered within a reasonable period of time. And lastly, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, or other testifier, or other member of the public. Thank you, sir.
Can I have a motion to move into public comments?
I move to the move into public comments.
Second, Mr. Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Jamel Adams?
What's up, everybody? I'm ready to get down, whatever. Thank you for the time. I'm getting over here. Obviously, I'm super excited to be here, honestly.
Nathan.
My name is Jamel Adams. So, hey, everybody.
Where'd you graduate from?
Winslow through and through, from school three to Winslow Township High School. I graduated in 2017. When I walked in here, I saw Dr. Poteet got superintendent award on 2017. I was the athlete of the year, superintendent athlete of the year. That meant a lot to me because I remember 2017 is a very special year to me. My colleagues, my, the people out at the school, we, we did a lot of cool things that year, so it was pretty cool to see him get recognized in the state for that. So I wanted to come up because I have a really, really cool story that I wanted my, my, my community to know about, honestly. So again, Winslow through and through, I'm an author. I have a book called Three Steps to Success After Graduation. And I would fairly say I have been successful since my time at Winslow Township High School and beyond. So I obviously would need more than four minutes, but I really just wanted to take time to introduce myself and my work, honestly. I'm somebody that you all want to know, so just to give you a little bit of story about myself. So again, Winslow Township, I was a track and field athlete, also played football as well. I went to Syracuse University on a full ride scholarship off of athletics. It was a blessing to get that. I learned so much from the people that I met at Syracuse University. Did really good at the, at the track athlete as well. After Syracuse University, I wanted to continue my studies where I got my masters at the University of Washington. And at the University of Washington, I studied sports administration, where I got my masters in that. During that time, I did a lot of work with their, with their sports department, where I led the soccer program. I raised money for football and basketball as well. And even to backtrack, I had a really cool project at Syracuse University, high level, where they actually still use the slogan. In response to the George Floyd events in 2020, we created a collective called D-SOP. I was one of the founding members on it. And in that, I was a part of merchandising committee, worked with Nike, I was the lead on it. Me and my team, we created a saying, I came up with it, called "One Orange." And now at Syracuse University, they adopted the whole university-wide as "Ride is Orange." Syracuse, they owes me a check for that. I definitely want a piece of that. I don't think I get my recognition, recognition for that, but it's pretty cool to see a program that I created, and I'm a founder member, still thrive. The university adopted worldwide. Everywhere I go, I leave elastic impact. And so again, University of Washington, I did a lot of great things there. I got my masters, and I learned a bunch. And I have learned so much, honestly, and I'm here to support the Winslow Township, especially in the sports. And so also during my time at my master's program, I was writing my first book, so I did a lot of research. And then that summer of graduation, I went down to Guanajuato, Mexico, where I wrote my first manuscript over the course of two months, where I did a lot of research and writing. Then it got broken down into three books, and this one right here is just the one of many down the road, right? One out of three that are actually finished. And so this book pretty much guides the reader on how to use networking to, so they can learn how to network into their next opportunity to get a career, or whatever they're looking for in life. After my time in Seattle, Washington, I moved down to Los Angeles. And so I lived in Los Angeles for three years. In my time in Los Angeles, I worked for the L.A. Dodgers, where I actually was a part of their championship run. Team guys, like we all know, Tony, I raised $1.5 million in a year for the organization, and across some season tickets and group tickets. Did a really good job over there. I also did work with Nike. So I'll actually be in L.A. next week, August 21st, for 8/24, 8/23, where they're actually having a Mamba invite. So a part of that program is called Air West, where we do weekly training, we get back to South L.A., the community. And part of that, the business lead on it, and we do everything Kobe Bryant, whatever goes, Kobe Bryant comes to L.A., my team is in charge of it, and we're hosting all the meetings with Nike. So again, I'll be back in L.A. on August 23rd and 24th, for that event. And now I have a really cool career path where it actually led me back. And so L.A. was great, but I just, honestly, God called me back to New Jersey, honestly. And now I'm a financial advisor with Northwestern Mutual out of Princeton, New Jersey. And that came out of honestly, a pain point of something that I learned that I lacked in. I didn't have the knowledge of financial literacy, where I'm doing great revenue wise and doing really well, but I didn't really know exactly where to park my money, where to save my money. And I was searching everywhere, high and low, meeting so many people, and learning like, what are you doing with their money? And so then I got a position with Northwestern Mutual as a financial advisor, and I absolutely love the work that I do. So I come here as a proposal to be a collaborator. I would like to partner with our, our school district and give back. I want to give my knowledge. I jumped through a lot of hurdles just to get to this point, and I don't want our students to do that anymore. I'm 26 years old. I just turned 26, so I'm fresh out of this. I remember what it was like to walk through these hallways and, and the pain of what I lacked. And so I do want to come back to our school, I do have a special point for athletes, because I, I have seen the value of sports, but not just limited. I definitely want to come to a point where I can help them get to their next chapter in life, help them out with what we call NIL deals. Our athletes have a really great, like my little man right there, put him in sports. Honestly, like he has a really cool opportunity with college sports and athletes getting paid just for being on the team. And so we need to realize what opportunity that we can give our students. And I want to be somebody that can vocalize that, support them, and actually get in the field with them, and teach them how to leverage the opportunity that they have on our hands. And that's not just athletes, but that's everybody involved. And again, I'm coming from a place of financial literacy, and then also kind of ish marketing and business as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams.
That concludes the people who signed up. Is there anybody on, nobody else?
Somebody else has signed up?
Tom.
Yes.
Before we close, I want to make a correction. The date for the bookbag giveaway at 303, the Post 303 is August 23rd, the same as Family Day. So if you buy there, get your bookbag, and then go to Family Day and enjoy Family Day, August 23rd, from 11:00 till 3:00. Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn to public comments? And thank you again, Mr. Clark.
I move to adjourn public comments.
Second, Mr. Clark. All in favor? So so we don't need another executive session, so on that note, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? I will see everybody Saturday morning, 3:00, pushing tail at 9:00 AM.